Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation given tonight by Councilman Renninger?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You bow with me, please.
Dear gracious heavenly Father, maker of all things, we come to you as humbly as we know how, ask your blessings on each one of us in this community. We ask that we make this coghise of the season and while we celebrate it, lead us and guide us as we make decisions to affect other people.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilman Gillespie.
Here.
Councilman Wood.
Here.
Councilman Argo.
Here.
Councilman Miller.
Here.
Councilman Renninger.
Here.
Councilman Bowles.
Here.
Councilman Fink.
Noting that we have a quorum, I now call this meeting of the Prattville City Council to order. The character trait of the month is sensitivity, perceiving the true attitudes and emotions of those around me. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. Gentlemen, for both the public hearing and the city council meeting of December 7th, you saw a copy of the minutes. Are there any corrections, comments? Can I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Renninger. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Gillespie. All in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye and the minutes are approved. We now come to the portion of our agenda where we have comments from the public, anyone who wishes to come down and speak to the council. I would ask that you raise your hand, come down to the podium. When recognized, state your name and address for the record. Mr. Lee.
Lee. Shall we all sing Dixie? And I live at 112 Quail Run, Prattville. Mr. Chairman, members of city council, Mayor Byrd, certainly a pleasure to be here. Thank you for letting me say a few words. When I saw Mr. Renninger outside a while ago, he said this last year has been a great year. With a $14 trillion debt for our country, I regret that I cannot agree with him. It's been one heck of a year, and let's hope the next, this coming year will be even better. I have a couple of things to talk with you about. One is something I'll pass out. I'll give it to, I'll give Mayor Byrd a copy if you can pass things around. What you'll find there is something from a county quite similar to Otoga County, Effingham County, Georgia, next to Savannah, rapidly growing, same population as us, and one of the major differences is they have a lottery. Georgia has a Georgia state lottery, and this lottery, of course, is recited in there. It's what it's done for that county. Their population for the state, of course, is much larger than ours, but if you look at Effingham County and compare it with Otoga County, well, you can't because we don't have a lottery. But it points out the advantages of having a lottery. And I hope that you agree, I have sent a copy to Larry Puckett. We talked today. He says, Bob, you know, I can't speak for the Montgomery area Chamber of Commerce, but I agree with you that people in this county, this state are going over across the lines or at least buying lottery tickets. And it's something that I just think, since it's all around us, and because the money is money that would not be taxable to us, and we need money. There are two areas that I think particularly need money. One is the Alabama Forestry Commission. They are not figured into that, but they have lost 20% of their budget. They've had to lay off 70 people. They can't buy new equipment, and if you're a timberland owner, you're counting on them if there's a fire to take care of it. And I'm working with some other people on that one to propose that we do what we did 35 years ago, and that is let timberland owners, we are one, our family, voluntarily add, back then it was 10 cents an acre, I'm thinking 15 cents an acre now, to the land you own, and all that money would have to be approved by the state, but it would then be taxed along with your normal tax, and you don't have to do it, but that has raised a lot of money back then and saved a day for the forestry commission. The other thing which this relates to is our schools, and I just think that we've got to do something to make our schools better, and this is one way to do it without raising taxes. Another thing I want to mention very quickly is our tourism committee. As this group knows, the chamber has a tourism committee, and a study was done, and the three things that are most interest to tourists in this order are number one, shopping, and we've got great shopping potential here, not just out at Bass Pro and over there, but downtown here too. And by the way, downtown certainly is beautiful. I came through there a while ago and deserve a lot of credit for the way it looks now. And sports is next, and again, we've got the LPA, GA tournaments and that kind of thing out there, and kudos to them. But the third thing is something that I feel like we're lacking in and should do what we can to make it happen better, and that is museums. They like to visit museums, and we have one museum across the street over there, and there's one that's called the People's Museum. It's just moved down to Otorgville. But one of the things that I'm proposing to the tourism committee when we meet in two or three weeks is that we have a sports museum named after the two Heisman Trophy winners, one from Alabama and one from Auburn, and call it the Mark Ingram and Cam Newton Sports Arena or Sports Museum. You can have all kinds of things in it, and beside it, I would like to see us have a garden. We currently have a fragrance garden named after a white male. We have a ladybird garden that's in the works that'll be eventually named after a white female. And I think, well, I mentioned this before, I thought about one black male, but I think we could have the garden beside the sports complex and name it in honor of both of those Heisman winners, and that's something that we're working on and thinking about. And in addition, we've got other museums that are in the works, and for those with the city that are going up to Maryland, I've talked with Ms. Morris about this, we need not only a veterans museum, which would not be covered at this meeting, they attended by FEMA, but we do need a multi-purpose storm shelter. We, on County Road 4, adjacent to the experiment station, would be a great place. It would be, you know, strongly built so that it would prevent a tornado or something blowing it over. And FEMA has paid for one out in Huntsville, Texas, and I think that when you go up there, whomever goes, well, to put that on the table is something we desperately need. If you think about it, we're close enough to Montgomery that if there happened to be a tornado like we had here or hurricane, and the legislature's in session, or even if it isn't in session, there are all these state workers that need a place to continue to carry on their business if what they have over there is destroyed so badly that they can't use it. So that's something that I hope this group that's going to Maryland will look into it. We have, I have a question as to where this might go. We have a cotton museum that's in the works that Jeff Thompson will be taking care of, and there's not a cotton museum anywhere in the state, and Auburn has agreed to let it go on the 80-acre experiment station, just like the Lady Bird project. Adjacent, hopefully, and I've talked with Connie and she, she's out of town, and I've talked with Joel. I don't know exactly, we've got a med line that's now been dedicated there, but I hope there'd be room for a veterans museum as well, plus the storm shelter. The one in Texas, the veterans museum is beside it, and they're the ones that when there are events that are carried on out there, they collect the funds and do that kind of stuff. So those are the things that I think the other location might be the Whetstone Sports Complex down there.
Mr. Lee, hey, this is great information. We've got a really long agenda tonight, but
I've finished.
You know, as always, we enjoy seeing you and appreciate all the information you bring to us.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I apologize when you get to be 84, you get along with it, and I apologize for that, but
Thank you so much. Any questions for Mr. Lee? We appreciate you, Mr. Lee.
Have a happy new year and a merry Christmas.
You too, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council? Yeah, Mr. Misseldyne.
Scott Misseldyne, 101 Seventh Street. I'm here on behalf of the Prattville-Togga Humane Society. I would urge each of you to pass the resolution tonight to give us funds for the first quarter and hopefully for the second quarter also, which is coming upon us. We are pretty strapped for cash right now. We've had more animals come in in the past year than we have ever had, and we are slowly deleting our budget, and any help you can give us, I would appreciate it. And if Mr. Lee was talking about a museum and everything, if you have a sports one, I would urge that you name it after Kevin Turner. I think he's a great Prattville hero, and he deserves some respect, so.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Misseldyne? Councilman Renninger?
Scott, why do you think the influx of animals is greater this year than before, than years before? Is it the economy or?
I would say due to the economy, yes, sir. And there really hasn't been a push to spay and neuter your pets as much in this area as there have been in other parts of the state, and we're starting to do that more now in Otorg County, and I imagine we will see a decrease in those numbers hopefully in the next few years. But the economy has played a big part on it.
Well, I'm glad that you're bringing the animals on the television because that sure pulls at some people's heartstrings.
Yes, sir.
So that's a good advertisement there. Maybe you can get some of them adopted.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Misseldyne. Anyone else wish to address the council? Ms. Finnegan?
I live at 211 Deer Trace. I did not attend the last council meeting as I was in Florida for the funeral services for a dear friend. I have, however, watched the video. I have found that the picture and audio of the council videos are not in sync. Would it be possible to either have a show of hands on the votes or a roll call when votes are taken so those watching via video can see or hear how each councilman votes? I had difficulty discerning this. Mr. Graham spoke about my list of resolutions and ordinance, which I have given you, that I presented at an earlier meeting, that did not or did have the monetary amounts listed. Dr. Miller, you addressed this, and I do hope amounts will be included starting this new year. He also asked when the municipal bond, excuse me, the municipal codes would be online. I find it very frustrating that at the July 21st, 2009 meeting, the mayor reported the codes were within 45 days of going online, and here we are 17 months later, and they still aren't. Along this same line, the airline tickets for the IEMC training in January were purchased with a credit card. On June 2nd, 2009, the council authorized the mayor to enter into a contract to replace the city's credit cards with procurement cards because the city desired to improve the efficiency of its accounts payable functions. These credit card accounts were to be closed immediately upon activation of the procurement cards. It is now 18 months later, and the city still does not have these cards. The council needs to seriously consider some type of follow-up system that would ensure actions such as these are not only accomplished, but accomplished in a timely matter. I would now like to voice my concerns with regards to two recent newspaper articles. On December 17th, there was an article regarding the $1.75 million grant to build a viaduct off of Highway 82 to improve access to the South Industrial Park. At the September 21st council meeting, this project was discussed. Total cost is approximately $3 million, which leaves $1.25 million not paid for. The mayor of state of the city is responsible for engineering costs and, I believe, the access road. I have given you information pertaining to the requirements of the grant. One of my concerns is the general rules of the grant, state project sponsor, which is the city, must pay all upfront costs, then will be reimbursed by ALDOT on a monthly basis. I've also found out that there is privately owned land that might need to be purchased. I don't see how we can possibly fund this project at this time with the state of the city's finances. This brings me to the second article. In Sunday's paper, the article on Larry Puckett being selected as the new chairman of the Montgomery Area Chamber of Commerce talked about how Prattville and Elmore County contributed to the Hyundai Heavy Industries incentive package. In the July 17th, 2010 advertiser article announcing HHI's coming, it stated Prattville's and Elmore County's contribution was $450,000 combined. I found out later Prattville's portion is $200,000, which was to be budgeted for $66,666 each year for the next three years. I do not recall this ever being acted upon by the council. I also did not see this amount in the new budget. Are we obligated for this amount? Again, considering the city's finances, I don't see how it is feasible for us to pay My last area of concern is the authorization of payment for $74,526 and $23,394 to the Prattville Area Chamber of Commerce. I have found out since 2003, the chamber has paid a total of $470,000 to Sonny Coffin, a lobbyist in Washington, DC. I have given you a breakdown of these payments. Supposedly, his 2011 contract is going to be bought out at a cost of $10,000. I have also found out there's a supposed contract that since the inception of the RTJ golf course has obligated the city to pay for billboards. This year's amount totals approximately $44,000, and the money is funded through the chamber to pay for them. No one, however, seems to be able to find this contract, so I've called the general counsel of RSA, Mr. Bill Stevens, asking for a copy. I also called Lamar Advertising, who put up the billboards, and they said they don't have the contract. They then put me in touch with Reed, O'Donohue, and Associates Advertising, Inc. They do have a contract, annual contract with the chamber that is renewed every year, but RTJ is not referenced in it. It is my understanding that $23,394 is the amount remaining on this year's billboard account. What I don't understand is if the chamber has already received $308,000 from the 2009-2010 city budget, why do they need an additional $97,920 for this year's debts? The chamber's finances need to be investigated in detail before any further funds are allocated. There are four other resolutions on tonight's agenda requiring expenditure of funds. I sincerely trust all seven of you gentlemen have researched each request thoroughly and will be good stewards of the citizens' money. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Finnegan?
I will comment that since becoming council president and subsequently Councilman Gillespie becoming pro tem, I've asked him to take the lead on looking at council procedures and basically the source documents that outline how we do business, both conducting a meeting and preparing the agenda and things of that nature, and he, from conversations, has that process well underway. That will address a lot of issues, I shouldn't say address them, it will give consideration to a lot of issues, some of which I know you have raised, including whether or not we want to put the dollar amount in the title of the ordinance and resolutions, even down to issues that you mentioned tonight, such as, you know, the show of hands on various different things that we do in terms of handling business where we have to indicate, you know, our vote or whatever. So, Councilman Gillespie, I don't know if you want to remark on that, but I just want to assure you that we are taking this opportunity with the change in the roles for the president and pro tem to just validate and give due consideration to perhaps tweaking here and there on how we do business. Would you?
I think you covered your question well, and I'll save till, at a later time, I'll be able to bring up some more information there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Finnegan. Anyone else wish to address the council? The fellow behind Judge Colley?
Mr. Pierce.
Mr. Pierce?
Council President, Councilman, Mr. Mayor. My name is Bill Pearson. I'm president of Pearson Industries, 11 County Road 4, Prattville South Industrial Park. We were the, I guess, charter member of the industrial park back in 1988. At that time, part of our guarantee of going out there was we would get a road through to 82, and last week, I've thrown a paper, it's possibly going to happen, I really appreciate it, I urge y'all to make sure it does connect to County Road 4. It'll make our life a lot easier for trucks getting in and out to us. Also, another med line's coming, thanks to the city of Prattville, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Industrial Development Board, we really appreciate it. But we have one problem in our industrial park, and this has been an ongoing issue for us for several years, and it's really getting bad now, and that's we have no DSL service out there. We are using HughesNet right now. As of this afternoon, Charter, AT&amp;T, Nornology, nobody services Prattville South Industrial Park. This time of year especially is bad for us on Dish because all the kids go out of school, they're flooding the internet, we can't get emails, I've been fighting getting stuff back and forth. We're a global company, do a lot of business international, and I am having a heck of a time getting through the Philippines. It has really gotten extremely bad. I'm having to go to my son's house and use his computer to do emails. I urge y'all to just look into it. I don't know what the cost of the city would be. I would think Charter or Bell South, AT&amp;T, somebody would be willing to come out to industrial park to get us some service. That's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Any questions for Mr. Pierce? Thank you. Dr. Simmons?
I know you've got a lot on your agenda, so I'll try to keep it brief. I wanted to give you an update on where we stand on the recovery facility zone bonds for Coles Project. I had spoke to you at the last meeting, and I've given the city clerk a copy of what I'm covering so that it can be attached to the minutes. On December 8th, after your meeting, I tried to call the bond counsel person and give him another opportunity to disclose more information. You may remember, they wouldn't tell us a whole lot about the bond. I found him to be very arrogant, very secretive. He would not answer most of my questions. He wouldn't tell us even an approximate yield or interest rate. He wouldn't tell me the term on the bond. He now says that he doesn't need any city approval for the bond, which I reminded him that he knows better because he obviously put an attachment for a mayor's certification for the approval for the bond, so he knows better. He now says that this bond will replace a construction loan. He won't tell us the yield on the loan, and he won't tell us the dollar amount. Then he followed it by saying that he's a pro and I'm an amateur, and I reminded him that if he was such a pro, he would have followed the IRS regulations. So the analogy that I gave Councilman Argo was it would be like me telling you I have a beautiful silk suit I want to sell you for $50 plus interest, and you say, well, you know, Jerry, that's very good, but the bottom line is I need to know what the interest is, and I tell you that I'll tell you the interest after we close the deal. So I don't think many of you would buy the suit. By the way, the IRS bond auditor that'll be auditing the bond says that this secretive behavior throws up a lot of red flags. Then I recovered, uncovered a resolution that's particularly troubling, and I gave you a copy of it tonight. By the way, I'm sorry, I was supposed to tell you that I'm Dr. Jerry Simmons, 141 North Chestnut Street. If you look at the highlighted section of this resolution, it was an attachment to the public hearing. It says that the representative issuer conducting the said hearing shall be informed of the details of the project described in said notice and shall answer any inquiries concerning the project and receive comments for the project made by any person or persons appearing at the hearing, end of quote. Then if you flip that page over, I made you a copy of page 12 of the official transcript for the public hearing, and I've given the city clerk a full copy of the transcript. There you'll see highlighted the comment made by the bond counsel on page 12, lines two and three. He states, "This is," quote, "and not a question and answer, period." So he made it quite clear that they weren't going to entertain any questions. So the point that I bring up to you is now, not only have we uncovered a defective hearing with a defective hearing notice, we now have what's apparent a deceptive practice, that is trying to mislead the IRS into thinking that this public hearing was held with full openness and transparency, and it was not. In my opinion, the hearing was actually a sham. I'd like to think of it as sort of a don't ask, don't tell type hearing. By the way, the IRS bond auditor said that it'll be months before they can audit the bond if they determine that it doesn't qualify for tax exempt status. Then the sequence usually occurs is that the bank, which is Oakworth Bank, whose board of directors is Luther Strange, by the way, they in turn will sue the exchange, and then the exchange usually will sue the bond counsel for failure to perform. So that's usually the sequence. Why should you care? Well, if there's a 2% difference in interest rate between a tax exempt and a non-tax exempt, the cost to the city based on your agreement, your Project K agreement, is $2.9 million, so I'm sure that you very much care. I think, quite frankly, it's deplorable that there was a lack of openness and transparency by the exchange, and you elected and appointed this three-person exchange district, and so I think it's a sham and deplorable that it's going to cost us perhaps some money. In closing, I think that this is a misuse of, or appears to be a misuse of federal stimulus money, and it appears that the only thing stimulated by this whole process was the wallets of a few selected individuals. That's really all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Simmons. Any questions for Dr. Simmons? Councilman Gillespie?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Do you have another copy of this, we can give the city attorney?
Sure, I can get another copy, sure.
Okay, so that way he can, or you want this one?
Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Simmons? Thank you, Dr. Simmons. Anyone else wish to speak to the council? Mr. Graham?
Mr. Graham?
I'm Charlie Graham, 126 Holly Court. I heard a remarkably good dissertation by Councilman Argo in the December 7th meeting, supporting fairness and why the Blue Iguana is deserving of a lounge license. Government decisions should be made in a fair and equitable fashion. They should be made without a religious test. Government decisions should be made in accordance with the Constitution and applicable ordinances, and not to the benefit of any particular sector, business or otherwise. Based on Councilman Argo's argument, the lounge license should be granted. Councilman Wood prattled about a parking lot problem. Councilman Wood questioned who is responsible for orderly conduct in the parking lot. It seems to me that he should know. Everyone agreed that the parking lot problem, which includes an aggregation of teenagers exacerbated by littering, was a result of clientele of several of the neighborhood businesses, plus some possible unlawful assembly of unspecified teenagers. Everyone agreed that the Blue Iguana has been operating as a lounge for the last seven years. The owner is attempting to comply with the A, B, C criteria. Councilman Wood alleges that changing the wording on the business license hanging on the interior wall of the Blue Iguana will only make the parking lot problem worse. A failed attempt at prohibition tells us all that the lounge business is here to stay. It, along with all other businesses in the neighborhood, generates badly needed sales tax. It is not fair to punish one business owner because the city is not doing its job in the parking lot. But then on the subject of not doing our jobs, you should have had a 2011 budget completed in September of 2010. I have spent a lot of time with you this year. You have said that you failed the citizens of Prattville because the mayor lied to you about the fiscal condition of the city. You blamed Finance Director Rod Morgan for presenting you with fallacious bogus financial information. You previously incompetently approved a $37 million budget. And finally, after answering hundreds of questions from citizens that evidently know more about your job than you do, you've decided to wait until after Christmas to see what the revenue will be then. Your performance is unacceptable. Is the 2010 audit underway? When will you have the results? We have got some pretty good ethics laws in the state now. You gentlemen are walking on the leading edge. You had to borrow over $3 million right out of the chute this year. Was this due to your incompetence, the mayor's lies, Rod Morgan's lies, or all of the above? We know you had a deficit in 2010. You refuse to be honest with us and tell us the extent of the deficit. Every meeting, the mayor comes in here with a new deal that you cannot afford, but also cannot refuse. I know you can't pay the city's bills. I know that you haven't paid the city's bills. You have no reserve for any of the mayor's new deals. The $500,000 grant for moving trailers at County State Park will cost you a copay of $125,000 that you don't have. We don't know what this disaster trip is going to cost us. All of the FEMA rebate talk sounds good, but I don't think you have a handle on it. The 2009 auditor said in writing that you were not keeping appropriate records on the grant deals. I sure hope that you're not using grant money in the general fund. This new railroad bridge reeks of another copay that you could not possibly afford. You simply can't do these things. You have to live with your poor decisions of the past. When will you learn? When will you learn to shut the mayor down? You cannot pay the chamber, you can't pay the library, you can't facilitate the humane shelter. But each week, when the Mad Hatter comes in with a new grant carrot to dangle, you forget all of your previous debt and start chasing the new carrot. The citizens of Prattville deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Any questions for Mr. Graham? Appreciate you coming down.
Sure.
Anyone else wish to address the council? Okay, Mr. Mayor, you have a report?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have several items this evening. First of all, I want to, I do want to tell you how excited I am that the Industrial Access Corporation did award the City of Prattville a $1.75 million grant for the road and access into our south industrial park. As you all are aware, we have been working on this since Venture Industries, way back when Hyundai Motor Manufacturing came to Prattville. This, as I understand, is across property that the city already owns. To my knowledge, will be no additional property purchased. We purchased property way back several years ago, and you gentlemen did that. We also had the engineering plans drawn at that time. This is excellent news for our south industrial park. This is about bringing jobs to our community. Don't let anybody fool you about that. I'm excited. We were at the Industrial Access Committee meeting last Wednesday morning, and just to remind you, the Industrial Access Committee is made up of the State of Alabama Finance Director, the Treasurer of the State of Alabama, and the Alabama Department of Transportation Highway Director. They had about $17 million to grant to communities. Some communities, even communities close to us, were turned down at that meeting. Fortunately, Prattville lies in Otoga County, and they go by alphabetically, they go alphabetically, so we were first up at bat. And we did ask for 3.4 million. We asked for the road and bridge, and then the connecting road from the end of the bridge all the way to County Road 4. Industrial Access has some very stringent guidelines about job creation and helping create future jobs, and so we were given $1.75 million, and that's a road and bridge over the CSX and the Norfolk Southern rail lines out there in the south industrial park. This is tremendous news for a city that's moving, and I'm very pleased with the awarding of that grant, as I know each of you are. I want to let you know about our holiday schedule. This Friday, City Hall will be closed. There will be no garbage collection, so those folks who receive Tuesday, Thursday garbage collection will not have their garbage collected until the following Tuesday. That's going to be the next two weeks, excuse me, Tuesday, Friday, excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Argo. And City Hall will also be closed on New Year's Eve, city offices will be closed on those two days. Our United Way City Employees Campaign, the employees, 100%, 100%, and in these tough times, city employees always find a way, and that's more exciting news from City Hall. I do want to remind you about Resolution Number 8 on tonight's agenda. That is for OptiCon. I know that Councilman Renninger will probably be discussing that, or has already discussed that with you. This is a signal preemption safety device, and basically what this is, this is a congressional appropriation of $150,075 to the City of Prattville. The only cost that we will have is $2,000 to install, for installation and training. Basically, in simple jambiered terms, what this will do is fire vehicles, it can be on the emergency vehicles, but they will be on fire vehicles, fire apparatus or ambulances, and I'll use Main, the intersection at Main and Memorial. What this will do is if a fire truck or an ambulance, as it approaches Main and Memorial, say it was coming from Winn-Dixie going east, as it approaches Main and Memorial, it will signal the light through and stop all the traffic except that going east. So if the light were to be in a function where the north-south on 31 or South Memorial were going, it would yellow and then stop allowing the intersection to clear prior to the emergency vehicle arriving. It's new technology, and it's something that our fire department, our engineering department are very, very much in favor of, and we were awarded a congressional allocation for that, and we would ask you to move forward with that so we can get that into place. With that, Mr. Chairman, I will be slipping out of the meeting, I believe, in just a few minutes, but I do want to wish each of you and each of your families a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And I want to wish all of the citizens of our city a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Times are tough, but the City of Prattville, you know, we're a tough community. As someone said the other day, every day may not be a good day, but there's some good in every day, and that's the way we're moving into 2011, and I appreciate the jobs that each of you do. I'd be more than happy to take a question or two if you have anything.
Any questions for the mayor? Councilman Bowles?
Just one remark, if you don't mind, Mr. Pearson was here earlier.
Yes.
Talking about the Internet.
Correct. Yes.
Can somebody, who would need to look into that?
Yes, we've already looked into that. We have employees that are sitting right here, and luckily with technology, Brad tells me, we have AT&amp;T at both our Whitestone Sports Complex and at the transfer station or the sanitation department.
Yes, sir.
And what I will do is, someone will contact AT&amp;T tomorrow and see what we can do to move it on down to Mr. Pearson, because that's pretty close, you know, if it's at the transfer station. I do not know how it gets there, if it's, you know, but if it's running, we will certainly try to facilitate that.
I would be greatly appreciative, and I know they would be.
I know they will too. They are a global company.
Yes.
And, again, that, Councilman Bowles, that's a good example of a local business that will benefit from the road and bridge into the south ID park. And what we're about, and I know what you guys are about, are creating jobs in our community and bringing that low, that employment rate down, and this certainly facilitates that.
Any other questions for the mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next agenda item is a report from the council on any committees, committee activities. Councilman Gillespie?
No, sir.
Councilman Wood?
No.
Councilman Argo?
No.
Councilman Renninger?
We will address number eight when it comes upon the agenda. Other than that, I have nothing.
Councilman Bowles?
No, sir.
Councilman Fink?
No.
I'd like to give a brief update on the kind of financial budget work that the Finance Committee has undertaken over the past several weeks. We have been meeting with the department heads, and that concluded last Wednesday night, almost a week ago, with the last department head. I want to thank the department heads for being forthcoming and really working hard to provide some critical information in this process. What I'm in the process of doing is kind of cataloging all of that information, sort of making a list, a roll-up of those items that were suggested, and these include both opportunities for decreasing expenses as well as for increasing revenues. I hope to have that accomplished by the end of this week. Some of these items on this list, if you will, will have actual dollar amounts attached because it's easy to ascribe a dollar amount, but others will need further work to define the dollar amount. An example of that would be the fact that city staff's working very diligently on a retirement incentive, but we've not got the total dollars that you would assign to that until we get the final form of it and an estimate of what potential participants might be. What we hope to do then is to take that list and share it with the remaining four council members who aren't on the Finance Committee, and start to get input regarding the next steps, sort of to define, if you will, the will of the council, clarify the expectations of the council, so we can sort of solidify the framework and the goals that we want for the 2011 budget, as well as same for the upcoming three to five years. And I hope that that process can be completed by the end of next week. I want to remind folks that one of the key underpinnings for our discussions regarding our budget work, our finance work, is that we are utilizing a actual revenue projection of around $30 million, approximately $30 million, which is based on a three-year average revenue. The mayor has been working very diligently with city staff on a proposed budget, and I know they started that work on October 19th, the same night that we recalled the previous budget, and that continues to be refined. Several departments, I'm aware, have actually identified additional opportunities for savings beyond that that they shared with us when we had our department head meetings, and I appreciate that. At the end of the day, the information that we're gaining as a Finance Committee in an independent sort of fashion will be, I think, the basis to critically analyze what the mayor and the city staff propose to us. And finally, I anticipate that one of the latter phases will be one or more work sessions that will be conducted in order to go over the mayor's proposed budget and to ensure that the council's expectations are met. I would, I know that I've provided some updated information about this work. It's definitely a work in progress. I'm the first one to tell you that I wish it was completed and behind us, but it's, you know, the more you get into it, the more, the more detail that you discover it to be. It's been a very labor-intensive and tedious process, and I just commit to you that we are on track and working hard to move it forward. And I appreciate, again, the cooperation and the hard work on the part of the administration and the city staff. So with that, we will move into our regular agenda.
Mr. President, if you bear with me one second, I would, at this time, request that we go into executive session.
Councilman Gillespie is requesting that we go into executive session. Mr. McDonald, I'll need a little bit of guidance here. Do we just, do I have to, what do I do?
Second.
You'd need a motion in a second, and then you do so.
Okay, so that's a motion by Councilman Gillespie, seconded by Councilman Fink. And all in favor?
No.
Not yet?
Will.
Come up here. We are going to vote on going into executive session based on potential litigation, which is one of the acceptable reasons to warrant going into executive session. Is there any discussion in that regard? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and we will now adjourn to go into executive session. Do I have a motion to come back into session?
So moved, Mr. President.
Moved by Councilman Renninger, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. All in favor of the motion to come back into session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The chair votes aye, and we are now back in session at 7:09. Gentlemen, we will now move into our regular agenda. Resolution, item number one is resolution to grant a lounge retail liquor Class 1 license for Blue Iguana Incorporated, doing business as Blue Iguana. This item was held from our December 7th meeting. Is there any further discussion on Resolution Number One? Councilman Gillespie?
If you would indulge me, I would like to ask Mr. Zen to come up to the microphone, and I'd like to ask him a question or two. Thank you for coming down tonight, and at the last... Okay, at the last, at the last council meeting, I asked you if you had come, if you'd come back to us with an adjustment in your security plan. Have you done anything?
Yes, sir, we have. I sent all the council members an email yesterday. We're adding two outside cameras, two new outside cameras that are viewing the parking lots, and some, most of our issues are parking lot related. We're going to implement 30-minute security patrols in the parking lot when the lounge is open, and we are cutting our hours back two hours on Friday night, our closing hours.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other councilmen? All in favor of... Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Zen. Yeah, you can sit down. Thank you.
Mr. President, we may have a roll call vote.
Madam Clerk, can you do the roll call vote?
Councilman Gillespie?
Yea.
Councilman Wood?
Nay.
Councilman Argo?
Nay.
Councilman Miller?
Nay.
Councilman Renninger?
Aye.
Councilman Bowles?
Nay.
Councilman Fink?
Aye.
And resolution number one fails four to three. Resolution number two, to grant a lounge retail liquor class-two package store for our R.O. Swami, owner of Eagle Holding LLC, doing business as Bama Package Store Number 27. Again, this resolution was held from our December 7th meeting. Any further discussion on resolution number two?
I'd like to request a roll call vote.
Aye. Any discussion? Okay, Councilman Fink has requested a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Gillespie?
Aye.
Councilman Wood?
Nay.
Councilman Ar-
Nay.
Councilman Miller?
Nay.
Councilman Renninger?
Aye.
Councilman Bowles?
Nay.
Councilman Fink?
Aye.
Resolution number two fails four to three. Resolution number three is to authorize the payment of funds to the Prattville Area Chamber of Commerce. This resolution was held from our December 7th meeting. Is there any further discussion on resolution number three? Councilman Gillespie?
Would like to have Councilman Bowles go first, sir.
Councilman Bowles?
Yes, sir. And this is no way reflecting on the good job the chamber does to us, but what concerns me about go ahead and, going ahead and releasing this money is that this is a summary of the money that we owe vendors, that I got from Rod Morgan. Now, I pulled out everything, and believe me, it took a long time to go and highlight everything that was from October 31st back. And there's stuff all the way to June in here that we have not paid our local vendors. Now, I don't see how in good conscience we can pay anybody until we get these bills cleaned up. And I came up with $1,500,000. Now, Rod told me, when I called him, that we had cleaned out most of these. We're down to $850,000 that are late. And what I consider late is anything from October 31st. Now, a lot of these do have November bills in here, so I didn't even consider November bills, and we're at the end of December, and this is what we're looking at. And in good conscience, fellas, I would ask all to please hold this until Janu, end of January. Rod said that it, we're gonna have money to pay this and clear this up with our Christmas sales and our license fees, but our license fees is already spent. We spent those on the, the $3 million we had to borrow. That money's gone, so we can't count that. And for, ever since I've been on here, I've been asking you guys, please let's slow up, slow up, slow up, slow up. And I want to ask you one more time, please, slow up. Let's hold this until the January sales tax are here, which would be December, and we have our actual vendors from auto parks. These are local guys, local merchants that are having to eat the cost on this, and it's really, really hard on me to swallow this bill, being the local merchant, and knowing how hard things are right now. So I'm gonna ask you all to please hold on paying this bill until January's sales tax come in. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Bowles. Councilman Gillespie? Did you want to?
I was, well, I guess the question I have is, is that in the form of a motion from Councilman Bowles?
Motion made to hold this until January.
Moved by Councilman Bowles to hold resolution number three until January, our first meeting?
Second.
Second meeting in January? Is there a second? Okay, there is.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Gillespie. Is there any discussion on the motion to hold resolution number three until our second meeting in January? Councilman Argo?
Thank you, Mr. President. The first thing I'll do is I'll address the motion to hold. Quite frankly, you and I, and Councilman Renninger, were in a meeting with members of the Economic Development Committee of the chamber and with the chamber president, Connie Bainbridge, in November. We were told then that if the chamber did not receive money that it was owed, not necessarily what it was budgeted to get in the upcoming fiscal year, that they were going to have to do some restructuring, restructuring, including the possibility of laying off some chamber staff. So I think that a motion to hold this payment to the chamber is, is, it's not well thought out. I don't think we need to do that. But I also want to address the idea of not paying it. I will tell Mr. Bowles and other members of the council that if, if, if that's all of what we owe, then in that should be what we owe the chamber. So it's not two separate bills. We owe the chamber flat out. No one has denied that. The chamber has submitted an invoice. The $23,000 we owe them from last year's budget, let alone what we're gonna owe them in this year's budget for services that they have continued to provide, even though they weren't getting paid. Now, I understand we're getting our finances in order, and I'm all for that, but I'm also for paying what we owe. Now, we have been collecting money from the city, from taxpayers, in October, November, and December, and we have expended very little of that except for what we owe the employees for their salaries. It's my belief that we can clear up almost all of those, if not all of those bills. We need to clear those up, but we also need to pay what we owe, and that's to the chamber. So, Mr. President, I'm hoping that the council will understand that we owe this money. This is not a gift to the chamber to allow them to just go have fun. This is what we owe them for what they provide the city under a contract. So I, I'm hoping that we're not going to move, move to hold this and then vote to hold it, because we will cost people their jobs, and I don't think that any of us want to be in that situation. I feel for the vendors, and I want them to get paid. They are owed, but not one vendor has come forward to tell us they were gonna lay off somebody if the, if the city didn't pay up. We've been told by the chamber they will have to lay off staff. The library is in the same situation. The Humane Shelter's in the same situation, and I, I'm not gonna vote up here for, three days, four days before Christmas and tell people they don't have a job. I'm not gonna do that, and I hope this council doesn't do it either. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Argo. Councilman Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Rod, please. Just for clarif, clarification's sake on a comment that Councilman Argo made, would the figure requested by the chamber, would it be included in those documents that Mr. Bowles has?
A portion of what's in that, in that resolution would be the money that we've been invoiced for, would be, which I know the $23,000-
Right.
-would be included in that figure, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Councilman Gillespie?
Yes, sir, thank you. Well, a question for you there, Mr. Rod, is that on line 27 and 29, it says, "In a payment of $23,394 for obligations previous fiscal year." If we were to remove that, that $23,000 would still get paid, correct, or incorrect? Because if it's already in that, that batch report over there, then it should be on the, the track?
It's, it's in line to be paid, yes.
Okay, so we can remove that, and we'll still be, we're not taking anything away from the chamber?
My only concern would be, and I don't mean, is if you removed it, if there would be an argument that it's an implied, an implicit order to me not to pay it. It is in, it, it is in there right now, under the continuing resolution. I'm, if you remove it-
Okay.
-without, without any express permission, I would be hesitant to pay that.
Okay, um, thank you. That, that affected what I have here. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion to hold?
One more thing, Mr. Chair. I want to make sure I'm clear on this, because based on what you just said, you would prefer that it not be moved, because we're up on the budget restraints, and we're having to approve everything, so if we take it out, that mean we gotta come back and get it approved, so you, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir. If you, if you remove it, I, I would ask before it's paid that I have some express authority to pay it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wood. Okay, we're now going to vote on the motion to hold resolution number three until-
Mr. President.
Councilman, Councilman Argo?
I'm gonna make a substitute motion that we lay Councilman Bowles' motion on the table, and I call for the ayes and nos.
Are you gonna help me with that one?
Sir?
You gonna help me with that one? Substitute?
Got that second first.
Okay, second. And I need to repeat what you said, so could you repeat that for me?
I make a substitute motion to lay Councilman Bowles' motion on the table, and I call for a roll call vote. Councilman Fink has seconded it, so then you would ask if there were any discussion?
I got that, yeah.
If there's no other motion, then we would vote.
Okay, the motion has been made to lay Councilman Bowles' motion on the table by Councilman Argo, seconded by Councilman Fink. Is there any discussion on the motion to lay Councilman Bowles' motion on the table? Councilman Renninger?
Perhaps, Mr. Chair, you should explain what this will in effect do.
Mr. McDowell, I need a little help here.
I may even need the Robert Rules of Order, help me ding them.
Mr. Clerk?
Councilman Argo?
Thank you, sir. I'm making a motion that we lay Councilman motion, Councilman Bowles' motion on the table. What I'm asking the body to do, in effect, is to ignore the councilman's motion to hold. That's basically what we're doing. We're just, we're saying that we're not gonna entertain that motion, and we're laying it on the table, which gets us back to the main subject, which I know Councilman Gillespie has some discussion that he would like to have. If Councilman Bowles' motion to hold prevails, then it's off the table, and we hold it automatically, and there's no further discussion. So I'm asking the body to, in effect, take Councilman Bowles' motion off in front of us and lay it on the table.
Okay, just to make sure I understand, if we approve your motion to lay it on the table, that totally purges it?
That's correct.
If we-
We're back to the motion, we're back to the resolution before us.
But if we don't approve your motion to lay it on the table, then it still stands before us?
And then we have to vote on his motion.
Okay. Is everyone clear on that? What I think you're going to vote on is Councilman Argo's motion to lay Councilman Bowles' motion on the table, which effectively means that it is negated and killed.
That's correct.
So if you vote aye, you are voting to kill Councilman Bowles' motion to hold this.
I wish you wouldn't put it as we're killing it.
So, all in favor of-
I, I can ask for a roll call vote, please.
Okay, I apologize. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilman Gillespie?
Aye.
Councilman Wood?
Aye.
Councilman Argo?
Aye.
Councilman Miller?
Nay.
Councilman Renninger?
Aye.
Councilman Bowles?
Nay.
Councilman Fink?
Okay, Councilman Argo's motion to lay Councilman Bowles' motion on the table passes by a vote of five to two, and the original motion is back before us. Is there any further discussion on the original motion? Councilman Gillespie?
Yes, sir, thank you. I make a motion that on line 27, currently it shows $74,526, that it be changed to $64,500.
Sixty-four-five?
Sixty-four-five, yes.
You're proposing an amendment?
Yes, sir, I'm proposing amendment, change line 27.
So basically change the figure from 74,526 to 64,500?
Yes, sir. The rationale behind that is that the chambers-
Let me get a second in, okay. Councilman Gillespie has proposed an amendment to line 27, changing the amount of $74,526 to 64,500. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowles. Is there any discussion on the motion to amend resolution number three? Councilman Renninger?
I'd like to ask Councilman Gillespie how he came up with that reduced figure and for what reason?
Councilman Gillespie?
Yes, sir. The count, the chamber was allocated 308, $308,000. If you subtract the $50,000 that was for the DC lobbyist, brings it to 258. Divide that by four, quarterly is, that's 64,500.
Is that all, Councilman Gillespie?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilman Wood?
Yes, I just want to make sure that on the amendment, we, we're only amending the 74,526 and not the 23,394, right? That remains a part of it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion to amend resolution number three? Councilman Renninger?
Move for roll call vote, please, sir.
Okay. Madam Clerk, roll call vote on the motion to amend resolution number three.
Councilman Gillespie?
Aye.
Councilman Wood?
Aye.
Councilman Argo?
Aye.
Councilman Miller? Aye.
Councilman Renninger?
Aye.
Councilman Bowles?
Aye.
Councilman Fink?
Aye.
And the motion to amend passes seven to zero. The amended resolution is now before us. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the amended resolution number three signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay, all opposed signify by saying nay?
Nay.
Chair votes aye, and this resolution, as amended, passes six to one. Item number four is a resolution to authorize the payment of funds to the Prattville Ataga Humane Shelter. This resolution held from our December 7th meeting. Is there any further discussion? Councilman Renninger?
Today I was shopping at Bass Pro here in Prattville, along with an associate of mine that came up from Andalusia to spend his money here, and I noticed that the PAWS program was out offering services to raise funds. I think that's very admirable, and I would ask that any agency that comes to us for funds, look outside public funding for their resources from this point forward, because in my humble opinion, public funding is just not gonna be as readily available as it has in the past. So, well done, Humane Society.
Thank you, Councilman Renninger. Any other discussion on resolution number four? Councilman Bowles?
I just wanted to say that I would be supporting this tonight, and there again, it's nothing against, against the chamber, anything else I want to save money on, but this is something I view as a health, welfare, and public safety. And I know personally we had a couple of dogs come up from the woods behind our house a couple weeks, I don't know, two months ago, and every kid in the neighborhood had to go in, all the dogs had to go in, and the Humane Shelter was out within 30 minutes and gathered the dogs up, and I'd hate to know that would happen to us if we didn't have this service. So I want to say thanks to those guys. Job well done.
Thank you, Councilman Bowles. Any other discussion on resolution number four? Councilman Fink?
Point of clarification, the Terry, who is our dog catcher, he's a city employee, correct? Not a, not an employee of the Humane Shelter.
That's correct.
So that service, the, the scope of the Humane Shelter is not the dogs that came up in the woods, correct? Theirs would be to receive those after, so I just, point of clarification.
Correct. Seeing no further discussion, we're ready to vote on resolution number four. All in favor of resolution number four signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and resolution four passes seven to zero. Resolution number five is to release the first quarterly funding allocation to the Ataga Prattville Public Library. This item held from our December 7th meeting. Is there any further discussion on resolution number five?
Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote requested by Councilman Fink. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Gillespie?
Aye.
Councilman Wood?
Aye.
Councilman- Councilman Argo?
Aye.
Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Councilman Renninger?
Aye.
Councilman Bowles?
Aye.
Councilman Fink?
Aye.
And Resolution Five passes seven to zero. Item Six is an ordinance petition for the annexation of 549 Covered Bridge Parkway and Covered Bridge Parkway, held from December 7th meeting. Is there any further discussion on ordinance Number Six? All in favor of ordinance Number Six signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and ordinance Six passes seven to zero. Item Number Seven is an ordinance for a petition for annexation of Old Ridge Road between Riverchase North and Pendlebrook subdivisions, held from our December 7th meeting. Councilman Argo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move we hold ordinance Number Seven until our first meeting in January.
Okay, motion to hold this ordinance until our first meeting in January, seconded by Councilman Renninger. Is there any discussion on the motion to hold? Councilman Wood?
Yes, Joe, maybe you can answer this. Are these the same petitioners of the one we just approved previously?
No, sir. These are, this is a separate petition. The first one was two properties that cover an apartment complex on Old Farm Lane or just off Old Farm Lane. The other is a housing development off of Old Ridge Road. Item Number Seven is off of Old Ridge Road. That's separate from Item Number Six.
Okay, has your department already done what they are going to do as far as recommendation along with other departments, or you all still have some fine tuning to do?
No, sir. We've provided you with a recommendation.
Right.
I think we've provided that before the previous meeting, and that was recommend that the property be annexed. You also set a public hearing for a rezoning of this property that comes up at the first meeting in January, and the petitioners have requested that the annexation and the rezoning coincide. They come up at the same meeting.
Thank you.
So I believe that's the reason for the request to hold.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Wood, any other discussion on the motion to hold this ordinance? All in favor of the motion to hold signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and the motion to hold passes seven to zero. Resolution Number Eight is to authorize the purchase of a public safety traffic signal preemption program. Councilman Renninger, can you introduce Resolution Number Eight?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville has been awarded a congressionally selected award for the acquisition of a public safety traffic signal preemption program, and whereas the City of Prattville must purchase the equipment and then submit an application for reimbursement, and whereas the federal government through the 2010 Congressional Appropriations Act will reimburse 100% of the funds required for the proposed acquisition, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the mayor is authorized to enter into a contract with Temple Incorporated of Decatur, Alabama, for the purchase and implementation of a public safety traffic signal preemption program at a cost not to exceed $150,075 for equipment and an additional $2,000 for training to be divided between fire engineering and vehicle maintenance departments. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Moved by Councilman Renninger. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Fink. As a point of order, this resolution will hold until our next meeting unless there is a motion to suspend the rules.
So move.
Motion to suspend the rules by Councilman Renninger. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Fink. Is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Okay, we'll now vote on the motion to suspend the rules. All in favor of suspension of the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Chair votes nay.
I think it failed.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Gillespie?
Nay.
Councilman Wood?
Nay.
Councilman Argo?
Nay.
Councilman Miller?
Nay.
Councilman Renninger?
Aye.
Councilman Bowles?
Nay.
Fink?
Aye.
And the motion to suspend the rules fails by a vote of five to two. Item Number Nine is a resolution to authorize the promotion of one wastewater operator trainee in the wastewater department to wastewater operator two, and one wastewater operator two in the wastewater department to wastewater operator four. Councilman Wood, can you introduce Resolution Number Nine?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Whereas two wastewater operators employed by the City of Prattville Wastewater Department recently completed training and testing through the Alabama Department of Environmental Management and earned their certifications as wastewater operator two and wastewater operator four, and whereas the City of Prattville requires all wastewater operators to earn and maintain certification, and whereas two employees have obtained certification during a continuous education process, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that up to $7,504 is hereby authorized to be expended from the general fund for the promotion of two wastewater operators in the wastewater department to wastewater operator two and wastewater operator four, is hereby approved. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Moved by Councilman Wood. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Gillespie. Is there any discussion on Resolution Number Nine?
Point of order, sir.
Councilman Argo, point of order?
This does require a suspension of the rules. We're going to operate it, we're going to do this tonight because it does require expenditure of funds.
Okay, thank you for pointing that out. As a point of order, this resolution will carry, hold until our next meeting unless there is a suspension of the rules.
So move.
Motion to suspend the rules by Councilman Fink. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wood. Any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Okay, we'll now vote on the motion to suspend the rules. All in favor of suspending the rules for Resolution Number Nine signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilman Gillespie?
Nay.
Councilman Wood?
Aye.
Councilman Argo?
Nay.
Councilman Miller?
Nay.
Councilman Renninger?
Nay.
Councilman Bowles?
Nay.
Councilman Fink?
Aye.
I believe the motion to suspend the rules failed by five to two. Four to three. Failed by four to three. Okay.
Mr. Chair. Point of order, sir.
Councilman Renninger?
On a motion to suspend, it only takes one nay vote, so for all intent and purposes, when the first vote of nay is cast, that ends it.
Thank you. So that means you don't call the rest of the...
Well, first of all, if anybody wanted to suspend the rules, there were only two people to vote in.
They were nays.
First two voted in favor of, and then the others spoke. So a silent vote is an aye vote.
For the suspension of the rule?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We have an item from the floor. Councilman Gillespie?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Whereas city staff will be attending the integrated emergency management course at the National Emergency Training Center, whereas the City of Prattville purchased airline tickets for city staff in the aggregate amount of $7,517.70, the full amount of which will be reimbursed by FEMA, and whereas the city is currently operating under a continuing resolution with regard to the payment of expenses, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of City of Prattville that $7,517.70 is hereby authorized and appropriated to be paid for the payment of airline tickets purchased by city staff to attend the IEMC, and such funds are to be paid from the city's general fund. Mr. President, I so move.
Moved by Councilman Gillespie. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Fink. As a point of order, this resolution will hold until our next meeting unless the rules are suspended.
Call for suspension.
Motion to suspend by Councilman Wood. Is there a second?
Second, and roll call.
Seconded by Councilman Gillespie, who likewise requested a roll call. Is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Okay, we will now vote on the motion to suspend the rules. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Gillespie?
Aye.
Councilman Wood?
Aye.
Councilman Argo?
Aye.
Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Councilman Renninger?
Nay.
Councilman Bowles?
Nay.
The rules are not suspended. The rules are not suspended, and this item will hold until our first meeting, our next regularly scheduled meeting. Are there any closing comments, Councilman Gillespie?
Yes, sir. Just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and be safe, buy a local, and be thankful.
Thank you, Councilman Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Also, I want to wish you all a Merry Christmas and hope you be blessed and healthy and appreciate what each one of you all do. Appreciate all the people always coming out. Also like to say that it's a tough job up here, and it's a lot easier to govern when you are not in a governing position. Have a Merry Christmas.
Councilman Argo?
Yes, sir. Just want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and look forward to all of the good things that we're going to be able to do in the next year. Thank you, sir.
Councilman Renninger?
To all a Merry Christmas and to all a good night.
Councilman Bowles?
Everybody else said it, so Merry Christmas, you guys. I really appreciate y'all hanging in here so long and looking forward to a great next year. I think we're on a good road. Thanks, y'all.
Councilman Fink?
Yeah, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and Happy Hanukkah.
Thank you. And I also want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a wonderful holiday season, a chance to be with family and friends, and really reflect on the year and how fortunate we are and blessed we are to live in Prattville. I do want to also thank my fellow councilmen for their indulgence and patience as I move into the role of president and learn parliamentary procedure. I've shared with some of you that I have purchased the Roberts Rules of Order for Dummies book, and that's probably more appropriate in some ways than others given the title, but I am collecting and studying a lot of the league literature on how to do parliamentary procedure. A lot of that folds into some of the work that Councilman Gillespie will be doing that I described earlier. And in particular, one thing I'll go ahead and say, it might be a thing that we as a group want to consider, and that's that instead of saying aye and nay for the votes, that we actually do it by raising our hand. You know, everyone in favor, raise your hand. Everyone opposed, raise your hand. And that might be a way to clarify some of the things that we do in other ways at the present time. So in closing, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second?
Aye.
We're adjourned.